Oh, really? Yeah. Yeah, it was like, it was a little bit like my computer was, I don't know, I'm not really, I'm not really, do you remember that someone in the back? Yeah. Oh, really? Yeah. So cool. Yeah, I was like, okay. It's like, it was a little bit like my computer was, I don't know, I'm not really, I'm not really, I'm not really, I'm not really, yeah. Um, I think it was like, yeah, it was like, oh, yeah, Don Deloach too. No, it was just, it was too weird, I tried a brand new one, oh, no, all right, it works on my laptop. Yeah, no, on my MacBook, MacBook Pro. Yeah, I just switched everything over to mine, and mine was what they, yeah, it was a brand new one, yeah. Yep. Yeah, no, it's fine, this is perfect, as long as it's something. All right, and then, once I get into Zoom, because Denny's not here, so I gotta break into his Zoom too, um, are there certain settings I need to have on Zoom? Yeah, that's what we have. Hi, how are you? Good to see you. W. Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, bye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. Okay, bye. Okay, good. Okay, so then, how do we get this one to work? Yes? Yeah. Um, I love it, it's a good idea. I was looking for these two lines, I was going, uh, ideas, it's just getting it. I was going after, if you have a look up there. Do you want to do the bit? Sure. Oh, thank you. All right, yeah. Okay. So the H nine part, that's like, totally good. Was this not what you were gonna do last time? Hanging in there. Right. All right, I'm just gonna go over here and say, I have some things, so I can control, and stuff, or a fire hazard. I can see it's great. Yeah.
Harrison's having an absolute shit fit, and I was like, why don't you call me the school community? And you can kind of see what it's like, and whatever, he's like, but I can't be on it, what are you guys talking about? It couldn't be, like, it's nothing related to this school, like, you're right, it's nothing.
You're right, it has nothing to do with it. It's funny.
I don't know, I think that'll last about seven seconds, and then he'll be like...
Turn off your phone, turn off your phone.
Shit, that happened to be about Xbox, surprise.
Oh, my kids just lost the video games for a week in our house, it's like, I hate the Xbox. Play all the love-hate, because they'll play it for hours, and I'll get, like, stuff done, but then they're like monsters.
Yeah, turns them into...
Tough attitude. Yeah.
He's such a big person. Just got a hot bike here, or something, or...
I say big emotions in my house.
Big emotions.
Big feeling. Yeah, the red zone is a popular phrase in the Hammond household.
You look like you're in the red zone.
What's it gonna take to get to green?
More than any of us have.
Exactly, she's walking around the house, now she likes to tell Brad, and he's like, go get a tubby, go have a tubby, she's like, my body, my choice. I kinda love that, you know? But you need to be clean. Right, also, cleanliness.
No, no, you don't smell great, like, you need to, and he's like, oh, he thought it was the funniest thing, and my husband was like, there is nothing funny about body odor. I was like, the things you never thought you were gonna have to say.
You said that, or he said that?
Uh, John said that to Dylan, if there was nothing...
When I say, like, it's better for them to hear it from us than their...
Yeah. Right?
They don't think I stink though.
From a place of love.
Uh, Kristen.
So Kristen is gonna enjoy it.
Yeah, as soon as I get the volume working, she's in the waiting room all thrown.
Did you hear me? I'll do that too. That wasn't meant to be...
Hi, what are the settings for the microphone and speaker again? Yep, and then, yeah. Yeah, this is like a very common spec. Sam said, no, it's not in, it's speakers, real tech R, it's same as, speakers, real tech R, or... Ever camera, AV, yeah, okay, got it. Let's see. Yep, okay, yep. Yep, we're good.
It's working, it's working.
Green, yep. All right, perfect, thank you. Okay, thanks, yeah, bye.
Kristen, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you and feel, good. Wow, fancy.
Happy Thanksgiving, all. It's a November miracle.
Denny didn't want to talk budget?
No.
Got a sick baby.
Oh, no.
Rather talk budget.
Yeah, right. Tell me, love the budget, don't let them fool you.
Sure, they've all been so busy all weekend, looking at...
I read it.
I need to make sure you did it right.
Tabs on my question, as I prepared. I wanted to procrastinate. I procrastinated more work today.
Just make sure you bring them back to the meeting, because then it's sad, like, next meeting, people shopping them back, and I'm like, where's those to make your work every time?
We should collect the books. Good to roll?
Good to roll.
All right. You good? All right. So we're gonna call the Sherburne School Committee meeting to order here at six thirty-four PM on November, what is it, fourteenth? So we've got a jam-packed agenda, thank you everybody for joining, Kristen, thank you for joining us remotely, hope you're feeling okay. So, thank you Beth for working sort of diligently on the agenda with a bunch of different folks. We wanted to open it up first to community comments, is there anybody, is Kristen the only one on?
Kristen's the only one online.
Or anybody else that would like to provide a community comment? No? All right, perfect. So, I'm gonna call this meeting to order, my name's Dennis Quan, I'm the Chair of the Sherburne School Committee. And, we're gonna get started. So, first, superintendent comments.
Great, thank you, good evening, everyone, I'm just gonna give you a few brief updates on my goals this year, and then, obviously, we want to get to the showcase of this evening, which is the first phase of the budget. So, a few updates, as you know, one of my goals is around developing a vision for teaching and learning with Denny's help, and so, at this point, we have the nine best practices identified, you've seen them, and we have posters now going into every classroom. Educators have chosen one or two of these best practices that they feel they'd like to work on this year, so they're learning from each other during faculty meetings, they're learning through professional development, that they're either getting through or outside the building. And, the November Professional Development Day, the Monday after Thanksgiving, a reminder, we don't have school that day, but our educators will be here. All of the workshops that Denny has arranged are around these nine best practices, so educators will be able to choose which one they want to go to, and be able to fill their toolboxes so that we can see more of these in action every day across all classrooms. Our leadership goals are also connected to these, and how to support the educators in bringing these practices to life in the classrooms. So, as Denny and I do classroom observations with the principals in all four buildings, we are looking for these best practices, and then calibrating the feedback, the constructive feedback we would give to teachers based on what's going well, and perhaps how they can stretch themselves and grow as learners themselves. I mentioned the monthly faculty meetings in each of the buildings, each one is dedicated towards one of the nine best practices, and sharing out best practices that are happening in the classroom next door, and November PD, of course, more to come on that, Denny will have a lot to share as we get closer, and then as we reflect on it. My second goal is around taking a look at how to capture measures of success, as we know, we have multiple ways of measuring success as a district, both quantitative and qualitative. So, Denny and I are working with a company called Open Architects, who creates data dashboards. So, we are going to be creating a data dashboard around quantitative data, including academic benchmarks, standardized assessments, including MCAS, SATs, APs, and then attendance and discipline information. And then on top of that, we will be able to pull qualitative data and quantitative data from all of the surveys that our students take over the course of a year, and be able to highlight which aspects, if we want to focus in on belonging, or connections, or extracurricular activities, and students' involvement in those, we'll be able to highlight them, and then track trends over time, to make sure that the goals we're putting in place, particularly around DEI and belonging, and making sure that all students have access to high-level courses, and feel like a sense of belonging in the building, that we are holding ourselves accountable to making progress in all of those areas. So more to come on that. And then transparent communication is my third goal, you saw my superintendent newsletter go out a couple weeks ago, I will continue to try to do those every other month. I have held three out of four office hours that have been scheduled for parents to drop in, to come and ask questions, to give feedback, to give ideas. I've had kind of low attendance at those, so I know it's a busy time of year, so I'm taking that as good news, because I would hope that if people had questions or concerns, they would come, but I will continue to hold them from time to time, so people have a space where they can come and chat with me. I've attended three of the four PTO meetings, and due to come to Chickering's PTO in December, but otherwise, that's been an opportunity to connect with parent leaders, share the district strategy, talk about next steps, and answer questions. I've also scheduled opportunities to meet with both councils on aging, so I've already been to the Sherburne one, and I'll be going to Dover in the new year, just an opportunity to check in with our older community members, share some great information and wonderful things that the schools are doing, and take questions and feedback. Sherburne was great, they really had, our community members had questions around technology, and how we balance screens versus screen-free time, what's the future of education around artificial intelligence, and I said, that's a great question, we're all wondering the same thing. And then, lots of questions about the lost art of cursive, and where does that fit into society, so, great conversations there. I attended the MAS S, MAS C, so that's my association and your association joint conference for the day on Thursday, and attended two workshops on communication. The first one was how to communicate on polarizing topics. Chris Horan, who is the presenter I used to work with in Boston, and he's fabulous, he now owns his own consulting firm, and he's consulting for the entire state of Massachusetts, as well as specific districts, but all of the recommendations he had to help a community through polarizing topics are things that we did last year. So I feel really solid about the way that we handled the community conversations last year, and tried to kind of find common ground moving forward in terms of our goals for kids. The second one was on how to bring the strategic plan to the forefront of all of our work, so I got some new ideas on how to rearrange it on the district webpage, again, the data dashboards to help ourselves, to hold ourselves accountable to making progress, and then making sure I'm always providing updates on the strategic plan to you, and to the community through newsletters, flyers, and mailboxes, et cetera. Chris is gonna actually be working with our leadership team on some strategies around newsletters, so we have come up with a common template, and a common platform for all four school newsletters, so you'll be seeing kind of an evolution of those over the next couple months, and Chris will also be sharing with us some strategies on how to be better at communicating all of the good things that our, that our schools and our students are doing. I've also applied to be part of an organization called Lead Now, they take superintendents from across the country, bring them together for one full day workshop together, or two full days, actually, and then a bunch of Zooms online around strategizing around crisis communication, being proactive, being reactive, sharing problems of practice. I've heard wonderful things about it from the two cohorts, two cohorts that have been through it already, so I'm hoping to be part of that group as well, which would launch in January, so, lots going on around communication, as things roll forward, and please provide feedback, updates, areas for improvement, because certainly want to get better at that.
I thought the newsletter was fantastic, really consumable, like, sort of snackable content, really clear, it was, I thought it was great, really, really good.
Thank you, appreciate that feedback.
Is that gonna be posted to, like, the council on aging, or something, like, how, is the audience, obviously, send it to the parents of the schools, but there's a lot of, like, community information to the extent that they're sort of directly funding a lot of what's happening here? How to, how to...
It's a great question, because you can get to it through our website. It's certainly an area we can work on in terms of trying to get an email out to other members, I know some districts, you can sign up for the newsletter, you don't have to be already in the student information system, so that's probably something we should look into, for those not already assigned to the school, how can we add those external people?
Yeah, we should look at the town websites, because a lot of times when I'm doing research, you know, because we're, like, I look at the region, we're on website, a lot of you watch from the towns, so we should make sure that we're clearly...
We are.
On there, okay, so then that's the other way, if people are interested.
Yeah, that's a recent update, we are on one town's website, but not on the other, we're now on both, with links to our website, but again, you know, how can we be landing in people's email boxes as opposed to them having to reach out, we want that two-way communication, so we can, we can figure that out, great suggestion.
Would you say you're quarterbacking the communications through the district, or is that, like, somebody on the team, or is it sort of like a team, team sport?
I would say I'm probably the primary person, but with certainly help from the principals and the assistant principals, and between the duos in each of the schools, you know, some have their strengths, and they kind of figure out who's gonna be the prime person, but I would say I'm probably the quarterback, despite my size. And lastly, Denny and I had an opportunity to attend the Metco Leadership Conference two Fridays ago with all of the Metco districts, so it was the superintendents, assistant superintendents, and Metco directors that came together at Gillette Stadium, and it's an opportunity for us to share best practices, and what's exciting is that Metco is launching Metco 2.0. So it's really an opportunity fifty-plus years later for communities to re-engage and relearn what the Metco program is all about, and recommit to its core principles and values, and it fits right in with the work that we're doing around teaching and learning, belonging, DEI, et cetera, like, it's just such a great mix, I'm wanting all of the same things to be happening in our district. So this is a quick, short video, it's only two minutes, that I thought I'd share with you, just to give you a taste of what Metco is working on. Okay, so, Dennis?
Just unmute, just quit the speaker.
Racism has been very bold in recent years, people are losing their lives, walls are being built, children are being separated from their parents, but the Metco program can be bolder and stand up for racial justice. After George Floyd was killed, we developed an anti-racism roadmap, we're embarking on a journey toward a vision we call Metco 2.0, where every student in a Metco district receives an inclusive, equitable, and anti-racist education, every student. Metco 2.0 means changing, improving, enhancing the work that we do each day in our schools, let's ask ourselves, how can we do better by breaking down racial barriers and stereotypes, by diversifying our teaching...
Thank you. Appreciate that feedback.
Is that good posted to like the council on aging or something? How is the audience, obviously, send it to the parents of the schools? But there's a lot of like community information to the extent that they're sort of directly funding a lot of what's happening here? How to, how to?
It's a great question because you can get to it through our website. It's certainly an area we can work on in terms of trying to get an email out to other members. I know some districts, you can sign up for the newsletter. You don't have to be already in the student information system. So that's probably something we should look into of, for those not already assigned to the school. How can we add those external people?
Yeah, we should look at the town websites because a lot of times when I'm doing research, you know, because we're like, I look at the region, we're on website. A lot of you watch from the towns. So we should make sure that we're clearly
We are.
on there. Okay. So then that's the other way that people are interested.
Yeah. That's a recent update. We are on one town's website, but not on the other. We're now on both with links to our website. But again, you know, how can we be landing in people's email boxes as opposed to them having to reach out? We want that two-way communication. So we can, we can figure that out. Great suggestion.
Would you say you're quarterbacking the communications through the district? Or is that like somebody on the team? Or is it sort of like a team, team sport?
I would say I'm probably the primary person, but with certainly help from the principals and the assistant principals and between the duos in each of the schools. You know, some have their strengths and they kind of figure out who's going to be the prime person. But I would say I'm probably the quarterback despite my size. And lastly, Denny and I had an opportunity to attend the Metco Leadership Conference two Fridays ago with all of the Metco districts. So it was the superintendents, assistant superintendents, and Metco directors that came together at Gillette Stadium. And it's an opportunity for us to share best practices. And what's exciting is that Metco is launching Metco 2.0. So it's really an opportunity 50-plus years later for communities to reengage and relearn what the Metco program is all about and recommit to its core principles and values. And it fits right in with the work that we're doing around teaching and learning, belonging, DEI, et cetera. Like it's just such a great mix on wanting all of the same things to be happening in our district. So this is a quick, short video. It's only two minutes that I thought I'd share with you just to give you a taste of what Metco is working on. Okay, so Dennis.
Just unmute. Just quit the speaker.
Racism has been very bold in recent years. People are losing their lives. Walls are being built. Children are being separated from their parents. But the Metco program can be bolder and stand up for racial justice. After George Floyd was killed, we developed an antiracism roadmap. We're embarking on a journey toward a vision we call Metco 2.0, where every student in a Metco district receives an inclusive, equitable, and antiracial education. Every student. Metco 2.0 means changing, improving, enhancing the work that we do each day in our schools. Let's ask ourselves, how can we do better by breaking down racial barriers and stereotypes, by diversifying our teachers, by creating an inclusive and representative curriculum, by building interracial friendships, by implementing restorative justice practices, and by preparing students for a diverse workforce? We cannot end racism, but we can make the experiences of all students better by implementing small and large changes. Our founder, Beth, has said, "This is as usual, as the way of life must be totally discredited." We have to continue to evolve as individuals, as a community, as a school system, and as a world. Metco is not a lasting program. This is just our mode of transportation. Metco mobilizes people, people's hearts and people's minds. Being a Metco community carries a lot of responsibility. We are the largest voluntary school integration program in the United States. People see us as a model for school integration. You are participating in something special and unique. As long as the community begins to see it that way, then every decision that you make will benefit everyone in the community. Metco was grassroots then and it's grassroots now. What is your role in this next chapter of Metco 2.0? Remain inspired to do this work. Be intentional about your approaches and insist that change can happen.
So again, very much aligned with the work that we're already doing. And so as more information comes out this year and opportunities for the community to engage with Metco 2.0, I will certainly keep you posted.
Do you know if this video's been shared with like the PTOs or the CSAs?
I don't think so. It's on the website under, on the Metco page. So people can pick up it from there. But I'm certainly happy to ask the principals to send it out in their newsletters.
Yeah, because I know that on the CSA, they're still looking for some, some Metco families. And I think that there's still, as much as everyone tries to communicate and have the proper messaging, there are people like, "I don't really know what it is." But this is a beautiful, beautiful piece that should be utilized in as many ways possible.
Sure. So we'll send that out and people can check it out. There's also, if you go to the Metco page on our website, a longer video about the whole history of the Metco program. And it was produced by students. So that's super powerful.
Well, are we still planning to have a meeting at Metco headquarters again in the spring?
Yes, in April. I can't remember if it's the first one or the second one, but we'll be at the office. Yep.
It's the second one.
Any questions in general? But anything else?
I have just a really basic question, and it's mostly for Becca's benefit. Are you able to share your slides with us? Because just as a reminder, for especially people who haven't been through the process before, these updates are so helpful when we're doing your evaluation.
Yes.
In the spring, I'm just like prompting what, what you've told us throughout the year. So it's good to just save them and have them. So you're prepared for that.
Absolutely. Typically, they're part of the packet, and it was an accident that they weren't included. So I will make sure that the packet gets updated with the slides.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
They also help me when it's time for me to do my self-reflection because I can go back and spread all the pieces together.
Coming up on that time for many of us.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do, I do just want to echo your great point about having community stakeholders receiving your great updates, Beth, because it's one thing that the parents and the caregivers and the administration and the teachers are seeing them. But as you just wonderfully put, the voters, everyone else, you know, who is living in the town, I'm sure would, would really appreciate seeing all of the great work that's going on and, and in some ways, not having to go look for it. So in whatever ways we can be helpful in our circles or with our conversations, that would be great.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we talk with the town halls frequently, and now I have contacts in both councils on aging. I brought hard copies of the strategic findings and the strategic plan to the Sherburne one. I plan to do the same to Dover. So now that they have the hard copies, it'd be great to keep everyone updated. So we'll find a way to make that happen. Thank you. Just trying to find Kristin on here now. Uh-oh. There she is.
All right. Perfect. Dawn, financial reports.
So you have your standard monthly financial or what report of all the expenses that we processed since your last meeting. Again, I have the government's bill and filing the warrants on your behalf. On the monthly statements, you know, this is an update from when we just met, which actually was less than a month ago. And as I, I forgot to put on here the little saying that what we'll do is we'll keep the report running and any information that's new is in bold. So it brings your attention to that. But it's actually good to sort of leave the bases, the basics there so we don't have to recreate the story every month. So looking at salaries, I just wanted to highlight that if you remember, the budget last year carried a reserve for negotiations. I did a draft in your last statement, but I, we did the formal journal entry. So all the numbers that you see in your budget for salaries now are reflective of spreading that $200,000. If anyone went back and compared it to the last time, there were a couple of little swings. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear about that. And they're really, we're going to continue to see variances. We have leaves going on. We have staffing changes going on. And so every month, you may see a little something different happening. But the good news is that at least for building our budget for '25 and where we are now, we do have some salary savings from post-budget staffing changes. And as one line item for sure is the special education, where you see almost $100,000. And that is reflective of positions changing from March, when we did the budget, to September, when we opened school. So that's very helpful for numerous reasons. One, for our current year out-of-district situation, but also it does give you already a reduction as you're building your fiscal year '25 budget. Other than that, the other really good piece of news is that our out-of-district negative variance went down by $35,000. Every little bit helps. And so that's reflective of about $200,000 now. And as I, as I always say, it's a very volatile sort of scenario. So, you know, things could change either direction every time we meet. But for right now, we're looking at about a shortfall of about $200,000. But keep in mind that we're going to have additional circuit breaker because we don't budget, we don't offset the budget dollar-for-dollar for a circuit breaker. So once we get that final number, which we should have before we meet next time, I'll be able to say we probably have another, you know, $80,000 to $100,000 that we can apply towards that deficit. And again, other things can change as far as placements. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to close the gap and not have to ask the town for additional appropriations this year. But again, that's just part of the budget that we actually have no control over. Also included in your financial packet is sort of the quarterly statement for your special revenue and revolving funds. And there, I just wanted to sort of highlight the building rental because we're going to talk about the use of that fund in a couple of different places this evening. And you can also see that what we've applied already to circuit breaker, the $340,000, and that we're hopeful that we'll have at least $400,000 when the calculation is, is settled. And then you can see your other preschool, non-resident tuition, the Solon gift fund. So this is a report that we give to you on a quarterly basis just to give you a feel of the ins and outs and sort of how the money is being used. You can see in the building rental fund for current expenditure activities that we did pay for the rental of the portable ACs that we had at the beginning of the school year. And so we use that fund for that piece.
Dawn, can you explain non-resident tuition? How does, what is that?
So we have an agreement with Dover that we actually, over certain times, are sending students. So there will be activity in there this year because there's two students from Dover who are attending.
But it's only Dover. It's not?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. I remember.
We have a committee-to-committee agreement for that right now. And so that will, yeah, so you're, we haven't booked anything to that right now. So you're going to see, you're going to see revenue coming in. You're going to see tuition coming in this year. But at this point, we have, we have no plans to use it. Just for historical purposes, when we find that we need to add a section because of enrollment and it's past the budget period, we have tapped into that fund to pay twice, three, two or three times, I believe. So it's sort of a little bit of a safety net for us to give us some flexibility.
Great. Thank you.
Because even last year, so the year before we did this, and then in fiscal year '23, fiscal year '24, then we added that teacher or that section into the budget. So it's sort of a nice little, and it was getting, it was getting low. So it's nice now that we're actually going to get some more tuition revenue into that fund to sort of build you back up another sort of safety net.
Great. Thank you.
That's it on the monthly financial report.
Any other questions? Thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Just to clarify, Christine, thank you for signing the warrants. She's
Oh, Christine. Oh, you Thank you, Christine.
I just put a hat on and saved it.
All right. Discussion items. So a couple of items that we just sort of, just to more keep the members updated on, on where some of the big-ticket items are moving. Christine, did you want to give a quick update on the calendar task force?
Yeah, thank you so much. So Beth kindly compiled a task force for us to look at the school calendar for greater inclusivity of religious and cultural holidays. And she did that in spring of last year, so around May. And I think the group was comprised of students, parents, caregivers, staff and school administration members and school committee members. And we had at least five meetings, I think, some, many in person and some over Zoom, where we had really wonderful discussions about, you know, what we hope to see in the calendar, what students hope to see. There was a lot of great data collection around what the parents and caregivers were hoping to accomplish. And same thing with staff and again, students. But we were meeting recently, and I think as a group, it was a very organic decision that in light of the current tragic events that continue to unfold in the Middle East on a daily basis, that this is not the time to be altering the school calendar. So we have suspended conversations at this time. I think we will look forward to a day when we can continue and have a reset. And in the meantime, we have such a great wealth of data collected by so many intelligent and thoughtful voices. But for now, the task force is paused. Any questions?
That's a great explanation. Thank you. I would just add that, you know, everybody is affected by what's going on in the Middle East. And there's so many raw feelings and emotions in our Jewish and Muslim and Christian communities that now didn't seem like the right time to be saying what, what belongs in a calendar and what needs to be added or changed.
So it's suspended, and is there a mechanism to evaluate that? Or what, what is the process to either continue though?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the benefits too is just a little bit of space because as we thought about the next iteration of questions that we wanted to ask our stakeholders, we were so entrenched in the data and the conversation where we looked at the survey questions we had drafted for the next round and thought to ourselves, if you weren't part of these, you know, 20 hours of conversation, these questions might hit you in kind of a strange way. So I think it's a break for all of us to just take a step back and go back to the balcony and say, "What's our mission?" And how do we work with our stakeholder groups to make a decision that is representative of, of the, you know, the larger group? I would say probably after the new year, we can, you know, I will work with the school committee representatives to reassess, you know, obviously, we don't have the crystal ball in terms of what's going to happen in the world. But knowing that decisions have to be made in January, February about next year's calendar, we'll see if we can come back together, you know, having taken a little break and with the ability to be more thoughtful about how we move forward or if, if we just need to, you know, pause again. I think the good news is you can tell next year's vacations, December, February, April, based on when the winter holidays fall, President's Day, Patriots' Day. So people can plan their vacations. It's just a matter of, and school will still, I assume, begin just before Labor Day. So it's just a matter of, you know, those other days off here and there that might shift. So we do have a little bit of wiggle room, January, February, to make those decisions. But, you know, at that point, we'll come back and speak to you about if we weren't able to make those decisions yet, what do we want to do about next year's calendar?
Did the data have any clear results? I would imagine this would be just a lot of different opinions. But I'm curious if there were any key themes like too many, not enough, or if it was really all over the place.
It was all over the place. Otherwise, you know.
It would have been easy to make a choice. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're trying to stay true to kind of the mission of, you know, obviously, having an excellent education for all of our students is number one, recognizing the holidays in some way, shape, or form. And it doesn't have to be with a day off. There's a lot of conversation in just about making sure it's recognized. And students are learning about holidays during the school day or during the school year. The equity piece, you know, there was conversation about when you have the majority of people saying one thing, then the majority voice continues and the minority voice isn't heard. So isn't that the problem to begin with? So no clear answer. I think the conversation kind of landed at, this is not going to be easy. Some people are probably going to be pleased with the outcome. Some won't, including some of the members of the committee. And then I, I said, "Welcome to my world." So no.
Okay. Thanks.
I think we recognize the CSA as well. They provide a lot of color into the various holidays and celebrations and whatnot that kind of exists. And I've noticed over the past couple of years that there's been sort of a more purposeful push on sort of if we can't necessarily recognize something through sort of change in the school calendar, at least let's acknowledge and make sure there's awareness of what that holiday or celebration is and whatnot. So that certainly does go unnoticed. Any other questions? All right. Building assessment and engineering studies. You want me to give the high level?
Sure. Yeah.
So we talked about this at our last meeting. This is the sort of professional engineering studies of the physical plant over at Pine Hill. It's sort of, think about it in two different sort of phases. And what is kicking this off is sort of an acknowledgement that there's a lot of space constraints and other kind of difficulties in managing the building itself. And that has been sort of exacerbated with some of the heat-related changes to the school day that we've experienced in sort of June, towards the end of the year, and then also in September and early August, or sorry, end of August as well. So right now on the table are two different assessments that are likely going to be executed by sort of two different folks working very closely hand in hand. One is sort of a building assessment to understand and kind of rack and stack the data and the elements of the actual building itself. So heating system and various mechanical and other kind of attributes of the building itself to kind of say, "All right, here's where the building is and what we're actually dealing with." The second assessment is sort of more focused on the cooling strategies, I guess is the best way to say it, around, okay, these are folks that do engineering work around, you know, developing, you know, HVAC systems for these kinds of buildings. What do they think is possible? Not coming up with the plans to actually go install, but just sort of say, "Here's what you're dealing with, and here's some things to, to guide sort of decisions and next steps." Did I miss anything big on that?
No, and I think that so that the cooling study is sort of kicking off initially with the building assessment, and then they will go off and do more on just the cooling. So by, by actually combining these, we're probably saving, we're being efficient in cost. And we've asked them, and I, and we talk about capital. You see, I mentioned the capital plan. We've asked them to sort of expedite that piece so they'll get started first, be able to gather the information they need for the architects to do the building assessment and then continue on with sort of looking at ideas they could have for cooling. And they will probably give us a couple of recommendations. And with those recommendations come estimated cost as well so that you'll have a little basis to sort of make decisions about. And so probably by the end of the week, we'll actually formalize and kick both those off. We were waiting, I had initial conversation with the, the architect after we had our meeting, clarified a few things. It will take them a little longer than what was in their proposal. Because when I, at the meeting, if you remember, I said three to four months, and the report said six to eight. So I went back to him. He's like, "Yeah, I don't know why I put six to eight. Sorry." That was like, it's really worth three to four. But that's where we talked about the engineering, doing the HVAC work to, to sort of move faster. And that won't hold them up. With his, with their report will come as well as potential suggestions, maybe renovate and give a cost, build new, give a cost. So if anything, it's going to give us insight too as to what we're talking about moving forward. So that is part of what their report will do as well. Sort of give you some launching pads as to what direction. And all necessary for any work that we want to do with the MSBA, this is definitely a starting point and something that and something that would be required of us to do, along with multiple other studies afterwards. But this is, this is a good starting point and at least answer some of the questions, I think, that we've all had, and then give us a premise of like, what does construction cost today? So then we have something that we're just not pulling out of thin air.
Yes, so I think, I want to be incredibly clear that this is not like the precursor to a new building. This is us doing diligence to understand what options are available. I think it's good diligence and good sort of governance to make sure that we understand what is it that we are working with. We're putting 400 or so kids in this building every day during the school year and making sure that it's fitting the needs of what we kind of have and the goals and, you know, strategic vision and whatnot that Beth kind of has mentioned. So there's a variety of different data points that'll come out of this, and that will give us sort of a good foundation to then engage with the myriad stakeholders, community members, the various boards and other committees within the town to start to work with actual data to kind of say, here's what we think the problem is, and here's some potential solutions. And to Dawn's point, primary, the AC solution in here as well, because we, I think, very clearly recognize that there is an issue at that point.
I mean, so in my actually monthly report, sort of summarized for you the cost. So the building assessment itself is $16,800. We've, several meetings we've had with the town, they've agreed to sort of cost share that with us. And then we'll pick up the full cost of the cooling study. And so those two, half is 16,800, and then the whole 8,000 will be things you'll see next time on your report in convert against the building rental fund. And again, that is great use of that money to sort of allow us to sort of move forward with that and not have to wait for additional, to build it into the budget itself. And I will, just to, for the newer members, that there's multiple ways we get revenue in the building fund, just to sort of make you feel comfortable that we're not going to deplete it, it won't be replenished. We do a lot of rentals of the gym to basketball programs. And our largest revenue generator is actually the SEDA program that is run by the region. So we do assess the program rent to use Pine Hill. And so that's $30,000 to $40,000 a year. So that is, definitely will be replenished and sort of gives us a lot of flexibility. In the past, we've actually carpeted like the auditorium. So we've been able to do some building projects that we need to do done sort of more expeditiously than if we had to go through the whole capital process. We always share it with the town, so they know what we're doing. And later on in the meeting, I feel like it all comes back to the building rental fund tonight. When we talk about the playgrounds, there's some other expenditures that we've agreed to do with the playground too that will come out of the building rental fund. It's a hot, hot fund right now to have. It's definitely allowing us a lot of flexibility to get a lot of good work done and provide, you know, great information and also take care of some things that we need to take care of. So we'll keep you updated. Definitely, the both projects will be well underway before we meet again in January. So look forward to, you know, seeing what they say.
Questions?
Thank you for sending all that information. It's great.
Good work.
We've got so many studies going on right now.
And budgets.
And budgets, yeah.
All right, now for the star of the show.
The budget. Yeah, so there's, where do we start, right? Well, I always like to just sort of give you an overview of the budget book, and then we'll, you know, we won't delve too far into the details tonight. Know that this is just our, this is our starting point. We're required by the town to have a budget prepared and approved by you and submitted to them by, I think, December 8th, I'm going to say. So we're going to meet that deadline. And it should encompass as many new things that we know about at this time, so that we're always starting with the largest budget, and hopefully, as time goes by, it won't grow. It'll only either stay the same or get a little bit smaller. But it's an opportunity to sort of put a placeholder on funds for fiscal year '25. Keep in mind that we're only a couple of months into fiscal year '24, which why makes this a little more complicated, because you don't even really know what's going to all happen in '24 before we start building '25. But you have an overview where we try to summarize sort of our assumptions for the budget, some key budget drivers, the financial statistics, which, you know, at the high level is included in there. We've included for your review Sherburne Advisory's budget guidance. And you can see that I've highlighted in yellow for you the school department liaisons, and we're fortunate to have them all in the audience with us tonight, Dan, Paul, and Mike. So we thank you for being here. And then it just gives you some other timelines at the town that we work into our calendar. It's important to also, we try to tie as much as we can to what we do with the district strategy. So just as a reference point, the two-page summary is included there for you to reference back. If you're ever questioning something, where does this tie? Hopefully, we, you know, are practicing what we preach, and this is what we want to do, and this is how the budget's going to function to do it. Tab two is where you get, so this is, you've got the line item from our general ledger buildup of the budget. You don't see this on a monthly basis. If you go and look at your monthly reports, they're sort of summarized by the function codes. But within this budget detail, you can see what makes up those function codes by line item. So it's a great way to sort of delve into the budget and understand how it's derived. So much of our budget is people, payroll, but then you can just sort of see the categories. And then addition to that, we give you a summary of staffing. And in bold, we sort of have put sort of the new reductions or adds, so you can see the changes. And then we've also given you a summary of the anticipated grants. I never want to lose sight of the grants and the importance that they play in our budget. Just by chance, for some reason, that these grants go away, you know what we depend on these grants for. So that's another piece that I think is important to see. And then you have enrollment, which why do we, that's why we have a school, right? It's based on how many. And as we typically have done, we have our three-year projection and our one-year projection rates. This is looking at in-migration and out-migration as of October 1st. So we look at October 1st data, and that drives what happened. So you don't, every, so you can see the ins and outs that happened over the year. That's what's playing out here. We always use that same date. At the top, you see that either the growth or the decrease per grade. So if you look at the three-year rate, you've got 112%, 103%, 99%, 107%, 101%. That's the expected growth that we expect on the class moving from like first to second over three years. It's averaged that it increases by 3%. And then we also just keep our eye on the one-year projection rate too, just in case there's some outliers that are happening that we should just sort of keep at the back of our minds. And, but typically, we work with the three-year, just because that's more of an average of what happens. But it's good to see both. So we'll keep our eye on these numbers in case we do identify anything that we can sort of make decisions on. But your class size is 18 to 23, and you can sort of see with the three-year projections where we would be with the sections that we currently have in the budget, which is 21. And then your fourth tab is sort of just more detailed about out-of-district, and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we start walking through the budget. And your fifth tab is actually your capital, your five-year capital plan. So those are the pieces that you have. And as you either have requests or we get additional information, that's why I like if we bring your books with you, because I'll bring additional documentation for you and documents to go into your book. So if we update capital, if we update, you know, the budget, when we start doing the different versions, I'll actually bring you hard copies. So this can be sort of a reference book for you for the coming year. So I always like to just jump and say, okay, where are we starting? So we are presenting tonight a budget that's an increase of 8.3% over last year. Just to give you some perspective, version one last year was an increase of 8.57, and we settled at 8.97. So as you can see, we always start with our high number, and then hopefully, when we're done, the increase isn't quite as large as we start out. So I feel like we're in a good, a good position where we're starting out. We clearly look at your budgets in two pieces. One is the in-district, which is actually operations of Pine Hill. And the second piece is your out-of-district, which is basically all students who we don't, aren't able to service in our district from ages three to 22. So any of those residents of Sherburne who are placed out of district, we cover the cost in your Sherburne School Committee's out-of-district operating budget. The region has no operating, has no costs in their budget for out-of-districts. It sits in the two towns respectively. So I think that throws people a little bit, but that's how that works. And then we do look at that as two different budgets, because you really would never want to sort of impact your in-district with what might be happening in out-of-district. So we definitely look at those as two distinct budgets. Looking at our assumptions, as we just talked about, we're assuming that we have level enrollment for fiscal year '24. We obviously work in compliance with the town budget guidance. So any new ask that we're asking for, we'll make sure that we can substantiate with the need. Obviously, we align it with the district's 23-28 strategy. You know, even though we're a couple of years out, we are continuing to sort of look at students' needs post-COVID. There was a lot of learning loss at the elementary level, so we're constantly trying to see what we can do to shore those students up. And as I just mentioned, just making sure that you're aware of the entitlement grants that do play a part in your budget. Looking at your drivers, obviously, as I mentioned, we're a people-based business, and payroll represents approximately 87% of your in-district budget. I will point out that we talk about the contractual increases on all of our ratified agreements are 3% for fiscal year '25. That is actually up from the previous round of contracts, where you used to see me say more like two to two and a quarter. So that is an uptick in our budget that has really been driven by the market and the last round of contract negotiations that we just undertook. The only group that doesn't have a current contract right now is our educational assistance. If you remember, we just approved a one-year contract with them, because we were looking at sort of the different levels. We're hoping that that study or that group will be wrapped up soon, and then we will re-enter negotiations for fiscal year '25 and '26, so that we put them back on par with our other bargaining units of having a three-year contract. Looking at sort of staff additions, we're bringing forward in this budget an increase of .5% to the math coach. As you know, we share a math coach right now between the two elementaries. I think with, where we talk about that we're looking to pile or to actually bring forward a new math curriculum, it makes sense to make sure that we have the support in both buildings. So both elementary schools are requesting a .5 math coach to sort of make them whole, and we'll have one in each building. We do have some staff reductions, though, that are helping offset that. Our ELL educator based on student needs is decreased by .1%. And OT, when we're assessed what current needs are in Pine Hill with a student cohort, is down .2%. So that's a savings of about $15,000. And as we talked about in our fiscal year '24 monthly report, we had post-fiscal year '24 budget staffing changes that netted about $95,000. It's not a coincidence, but a lot of these numbers are going to sort of net, and I don't plan this. This is actually all of this happened. But when we get to the end, you'll see that we're really, all these ins and outs, we're only looking at a net increase of $10,000. The other piece, and this is the only place where we did rely on ESER funds, but it allowed us to sort of try out a couple of different positions. But we are looking to add two positions that were funded by ESER through this year, and one from Circuit Breaker. So for the last two years, because of our out-of-district activity, you've noticed that we pulled the budgeted educational assistant that was going to Circuit Breaker and brought it into the operating fund to provide some additional relief to out-of-district activity. So to be safe, I think we're going to start version one, bringing that Circuit Breaker EA funded historically into the operating fund. We'll see where we shake out without a district. We can always put it back into Circuit Breaker. But because two years running, we've had to pull it, I thought it made sense to at least roll it out in version 1.0. So we are adding three positions that have already existed, but were not funded with the general funds. But it is offset with one gen ed position that was sort of now combined with one of our new positions that we tried. So we have the academic coordinator, that's sort of in the learning center. That was one of the positions that we'd been piling in at Pine Hill. That can sort of serve some of the same needs that we had for one of the gen ed EAs, so we combine that. So then that gives us just a net increase of 70. The other position that we were sort of piloting was a floating EA, which is instrumental to helping classroom coverage when staff members have to attend IEP meetings. So we've done that for two years, where we funded it with ESER. It definitely is worthwhile, so we want to bring it into the general fund. And then if we have any retirements, we will bring those forward in later versions. But right now, we don't anticipate any retirements. If we were made aware of any retirements, the way our educator contract is sort of written is they have until February 1st to sort of pull that back. So we never really talk about retirements until we cross that February 1st date. But that will be something that would be coming forward in later versions. So we talked about the math coach and the addition of the math curriculum. That's one of the big increases. Then we'd be looking at adding, well, the cost would be $47,500 for pilot, for bringing on a new math curriculum that would be K through five. The sort of nuance here is that it's a five-year package price that you are required to pay in year one. So it's, Master Law has actually been a little bit more savvy with working with schools in that they know that a lot of the vendors are sort of creating contracts like that or, and purchasing contracts like that that actually build in savings. In the past, we weren't able to really take advantage of that, because you could not prepay. But I think they're see, they realize that where they were costing municipalities and school districts money by not allowing that. So I think that's why more vendors are sort of crafting packages like that. The beauty of that is that we would pay for it in '25. Then we would really have no math expense for the next four years. And when you pick back up in year six, we'd really just be getting the workbooks. So we'd be back to where we are with everyday math, where we spend $10,000 to $13,000 on just materials. So that is, again, still totally under discussion, but it was important for us to at least put a placeholder in the budget. We had some funds that were being used for other textbooks that we didn't need. So you're going to, when you look in your detailed budget, you'll see an increase of only $21,500. And that's because there was already some money there that would have gone away if we weren't doing this math curriculum. So it sort of helped sort of make the increase not look so large, dollar for dollar. And so where the plan is for a full presentation on this initiative, it may even be a joint meeting with both elementaries to sort of hear the plan in sort of sometime in the January, February timeline, definitely prior to your final budget approval in March. But I think there'll be a lot of items to hear about, to discuss, and see how we want to proceed. You don't have to do K through five. It could be something less. But again, not knowing in November where we want to be, where we went for full implementation. The majority of our other operating accounts really remains level. And I think that's going to be in guidance with, yeah, sort of the town guidance to sort of take what you have and still make it work. Two areas that we really don't have any control over doing that, though, is our general education, our general education transportation. We have an automatic 1.6% increase. But fuel is still not, the price of fuel is still not in our favor. And I've been hesitant to keep adding to the fuelers there, but it seems to be pretty standard that we're going to have it. So rather than having a deficit, I did increase that a little bit. And our utilities, you'll note that our electricity costs, starting in December of this year, is going up 40%. So we only had half of the year in fiscal year '24. We'll have the full experience of that in '25, plus delivery costs are continuing to increase on it, so that we have no control over that. We do, do, we did, you know, we do, we actually signed long-term contracts for electricity, so we were sort of in a really sweet spot, and then there was no way around it. You had, you had to get out of that sweet spot for a little bit. You had, you had to get out of that sweet spot for a little bit. But I think we locked in at a pretty good rate. I think we locked in at like 14 cents a kilowatt. So if you look at your ever-source bills and see what you're paying, you'll see that actually it seems like a 40%, it was a 40% increase, but it's actually really good considering what still is going on in the market right now. And then, so we talked about enrollments. So the out of district, we are looking right now at 11 placements. And I always like to have sort of show you the roll forward of that. So if you go to tab four, you can see that we're budgeting $1,295. Last year, the budget at this point was $1,060. So it's an increase of $235,000. If you go down to the changes from fiscal year 24 budget, you sort of see how it all plays out. As I, as I mentioned in '24, we saw increases, we saw changes in placements that resulted in increases in cost. So that's $100,000 of the 235. We had one new placement between budgeted '24 and budgeted '25. And then we're luckily not seeing 14% increases this year, but we're budgeting for five. And part of that is the increase. So those are the components.
Is there any early read on that? Didn't they give us a, like a heads up that?
That was because that was across the board. On a, on a normal basis, it's school by school basis. But that was a one-time across the board for all private placements. So we, 5%, we had, in the past, had always done 3%. So I did sort of go up to five after 14% last year. I don't think you're going to see a lot of schools having anything over five. We know our collaboratives right now are rolling out their budgets and looking at 3% increases so that we've got a little bit of leadway in that five. But better to sort of hold that now because we're still early in the process. Everyone's doing their budgets now, so we don't really know how everyone's going to play out. But we will, I think, I felt very comfortable that 5% will get us at the top of where we need to be. The one thing that we don't have a good handle on right now is sort of our transportation for out of district. We still have not received our first slight bills for this year. They're slow in getting those out. And we use our collaborative for the majority of our transportations with always like one vendor. Once we get that, then we'll be able to get a better sense of where we are with transportation. But I do know that they're only looking at a 4% increase per mile, which is actually really good for us for '25. I just don't really know how our, how, who's riding and how many miles people are going right now until I get that first bill. So we will try to update that. But, and then you also have in the category sort of, so I told you that we cover students who live in Sherburne between the ages of three and 22. It's always good for you to sort of look and see where they are in the realm of that age group, right? So in elementary, we have less than three pre-K 5. We have less than three in middle school. We have five sort of in the high school 9-11 range. We don't have anyone next year who's going to be a 12th grader. And why that's good to know, because a lot of those then will graduate out and you can sort of know that you'll get some relief. And then we have less than three in the 12-plus. So we do have placements that we will continue to be responsible for until they turn 22. So we're sort of spread out, but it's always, I think, good to sort of see. It's also good to see like where we're placing students. So we don't have anyone going to sort of another in-district public program because other school districts have, well, think about Pine Hill's schools program, right? Similar to that. Collaboratives are usually the most cost savings because it's usually collaborative, we're all, districts all working together so that you're looking to just sort of break even and help each other, right? The masses are working together. So we do have a good amount in the collaborative. And non-public, obviously, is our largest category.
And Dawn, for the changes in placements, is that maybe when a student is identified as being better served by a different out-of-school district?
Yes, where we saw increase in cost. We had one or two students actually last year that were in mass public that that wasn't working, and so they had to go to non-public. And those typically do cost more. So that was that. So if we just go back to just looking at the overall, there's an operating summary expense that sort of gives you, again, the categories. It's in tab one. So if you look at salaries, and we talked about how your salaries are 87%, you can sort of see the breakout. And it's, it's, there's a lot of, there's a couple of things going on that make, so if you look at other educational expenditures, and we've talked about the textbooks being increased, but you only see $25. When you start going through the line items and when you read the staff report that we took two positions from contracted services and moved them into the contract, those amounts used to be in the other educational expenditures. We moved them up to salaries. So it's sort of hiding the fact that we added the textbooks because we delete, we took the expenses away from those contracted services. Because when I first looked at this, I'm like, wait, why does this only say $25? It should be more than that. But if you look at the detail, you'll see that there's $21,500 that's coming out of one of those contracted services accounts. Actually, it turns, turns out to be exactly what we increased textbooks for. So that just gives you the indication that everything else that we did in that category netted to $25. So we're really not looking for large expenses. We did look for, we look, we say trend budgeting. If you look in your, your detail, you've got five years of data. You've got three actuals, the 24 budget, and then the proposed 25. We look to see like a certain line items that always going over. Is it always under? And try to adjust for that, understanding, like we will understand why it's happening. But you'll see some ins and outs and some of the individual line items in the detail of where we sort of done, we have done trend budgeting. Some are up and some are down. But in the most part, we didn't touch a lot. Salaries is where your activity really takes place. And then you can just sort of look at your tuition and transportation for out of district and sort of see how we have, you know, what our expenditures have been in the last three years and then what our budget was for last year compared to this year. And then knowing that we, right now, are using $300,000 with Circuit Breaker. So your out of district, when you go back to that sheet, was higher, right? Because the number here is net of the $300,000 that we plan to cover with Circuit Breaker. And that's a, that's a conservative number. That's about, assuming we're going to get 50% reimbursement, we'll get probably, we have now, for the last couple of years, always gotten 75%. So there's some cushion in there. That too, when we work with the town, is trying to balance our budget, we can bring more Circuit Breaker in. But it's, it's comforting to have a little bit of a reserve, I think, that we have some control over in addition to the stabilization fund that the town has. And so that's where I would like to not try to deplete ourselves to zero as of here, but we'll see how that plays out. Okay, I've been running at the mouth, but hopefully some of this is making sense. You know, looking at your, having time just to look at it over the weekend and just sort of how this, the timeline will play out. So our next meeting will be February 6th. That's your next committee meeting where we would present version 2.0. And then we have a meeting with advisory that typically is just the chair. We thought maybe we might consider a different date, February 14th, but maybe we'll just have a big Valentine's Day party. And then the final version, where you have your open hearing and your final vote is March 12. And then we turn it over and it's all in the town's hands to go through their open hearing and annual town meeting. So as you spend time with us, if there's any additional data that would be helpful for you, please let us know. I'm happy to provide it. Detail, any detailed questions, send it to Dennis. And then we can, you know, make sure that we address that at the next meeting. So no questions is too small or too large. We want you guys to feel comfortable with the budget and know that we actually, from a salary standpoint, I will tell you, we build it employee by employee. And so it's very detailed what we have. Luckily, it's one school, it's one school, then one school, then two schools. But, you know, there is, there is not, I'm going to say there's not fluff in this budget. We really work hard to do the best job that we can for both the staff and the students at Pine Hill in the most economical way. And I think that's always just sort of been the motto at Pine Hill. They make a lot with little. And I think that anytime we're asking for additional funds, it's because we truly do need those additional funds to continue to be the successful school that we are.
Questions?
Would you prefer us to send questions offline versus now or?
Either way.
Okay, I just, I think three questions. There were a couple, like percent changes in salaries that were higher than we had previously talked about. And I was just curious, again, sure, there's good reasons, right? But like the guidance counselors is up 10%. I think the custodial is up 7% and it didn't have like an explanation. So I was just curious about some of those big increases.
So that, when you, when we talk about the educators, so they have steps in, they have COLA and STEPS. So at least they have 3%. Then the STEPS range from 4% to 9%. So there are staff in there that probably had a, and they're all, like, they're spread out on the matrix. Like, it's not even on the matrix. So some places it could be 8%. So it's 8% plus 3%. So you could have an 11% increase. And so when there's only a couple of people in a line item, like there's only, you know, 2.5 in there, it definitely will vary that way. The custodians, I will say, we had, if you remember, when you approved their contract, their contract was exceeded sort of the, the reserve that we had in the budget. But there are so few employees in that category, we wouldn't have approved it. So you're seeing a catch-up of what we didn't have enough for to cover in '24.
Got it.
Plus the COLA in '25.
Perfect. Thank you. And then my other question, oh, was the exact same question Christine had. So just the, the jump in the out of state, oh, tuition out of state. We just hadn't talked much about, is that, that the right location for a student happens to not be in Massachusetts?
Yeah.
Okay. That is, those were my questions.
Right. And then you can see, we didn't have anyone out of state last year.
Right.
We had someone in '23, but nothing in '21, '22. So that just all varies. And out of state for us is, you have to be like Rhode Island. A lot of them are Rhode Island.
Got it. Okay. Great.
That's where transportation can start to.
Get a little high.
Transportation is now is best.
Got it. And I did have one question on enrollment, if, and if we're ready to move there. But if not, I can wait. Oh, okay. Excellent. So I'm just curious how these numbers are calculated. So I know that there was a lot of conversation in town right now about apartments and building and things like that. And it didn't seem like we were accounting for student increases as a result of that. And I was just curious if that's intentional or?
Well, I don't think there's anything concrete.
Okay.
Right? So we would not start inflating our numbers for the unknown. And I will say, in talking to other school districts, that the net student, the students that usually net for some of these is never as great as like what they say. We definitely have a little bit of capacity. But you've got to think about a housing project that potentially the kids would be spread between pre-K and 12.
Right.
So when you start like just putting a few in all the grades, I don't think it's as overwhelming as an impact as it can seem to be. And sometimes this is a little bit of a scare tactic, right?
Yeah.
Because I know I was getting some calls about when they were having that meeting, that it was going to be, you know, how much was it going to cost per, you know, student to do this? And I'm like, when you add a student or two, it really is not incrementally going to increase your budget. But they were taking our price per student, multiplying it by how many students they thought it's going to cost us $5 million.
Right.
So hopefully that didn't get presented that way because I spent some time talking with one of the select board members about how that really works and that we have capacity to pick up. So students are really not going to cost the district any more money. It's with, there's, it's something overwhelming. So we have not, we have not been told or we're not aware that there's something that's going to
Definitely.
Cause this massive, yeah, chaos.
Cool.
Chaos.
I was going to say, do you want to explain the three-year projection rate in the one year? Or do you want to take a break and I can?
Yeah. No, I mean, so the three-year is just looking at what has happened between grades over three years and doing the average.
And that extrapolating it out.
Yeah. And then the one year is just what happened, like what was the growth from K to 1 last year? That's what the.
Proportional. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
And then the kindergarten, we just usually take the, the three-year average, so the previous three years and roll that out until we get census data. Barb has an indication on her census data, though, that we're still looking in the 50s, actually for the next three years, which is sort of what our numbers say. But that is, that's the only sort of unknown we have is what our incoming kindergarten is going to be.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
The one cost driver on this is the class size limits that we've established, right? So I don't think we've had to increase educators because we couldn't meet the cohort class levels.
We did a couple of years ago.
We had to reshift, though.
No, but we have added.
We have added.
Yeah. We had to add in '23 using the non, the non-resident tuition fund and we built it into the '24. Yeah.
Like my second grader, one of the years had a new teacher recently.
You have 21 sections now. In, in 2021, you had 19. So between '21 and now, we've added two.
So that's where the costs could, if you, because Barb and Allison do a lot of gymnastics to try to figure out how do you make these, like this chart down at the bottom. If you guys help to try to forecast to where things go.
So there is shifting between grades.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you look at the sections last, this year versus what they're projecting, a little bit different based on, right? So like.
And if I recall correctly, that, that's a guideline of 23 students down to hard limit, correct?
18 to 23. Yeah. And then we combined, you used to have two guidelines. You had K through three and four or five. And four or five actually went up to 25. And so there was the decision to sort of make it all one and get rid of the 25, but maintain the K three, which was 18 to 23.
Got it.
Yeah, we're trying to get closer to Dover's guideline.
Right. Dover, 17 to 22. But at the end of the day, it all sort of turns out. I mean, you've got some class sizes that are below 18 because when you're dealing with numbers this small, it's, there's like a place where, you know, yeah. There's not a lot of decision-making.
Yeah. Cool. Great. Those were the questions I came up with. Thank you so much.
Thank you for looking at.
Other questions? Do you want to just talk for a minute about, sort of, you hit on it, but like, what's the interaction with Barb and Allison around like thinking about?
Right.
Like what their, what called their asks are and then working.
I jumped right in, so I skipped that part. So we actually opened the budget up for our, the building level administration started looking at like the third week of October. So they do meet with their PLC leaders, they meet with their internally, and they sort of talk about like where, what changes they need to see, what they'd like to request. And you'll see some changes in there, like library books went up 1,000 because they, that was a request. You know, talked about the math coach and maintaining the same level of educational assistance that we have. So they do a little work. Then we actually meet, all, everyone in central office, our whole team, meets with the assistant principal and the principal at each school to walk through where we are with our work and then combine it with their work. So you're seeing sort of a collaborative budget here based on what they told us they need, what we have already identified sort of at the central office level of bigger initiatives that are going to happen. And it all sort of culminates in this. Obviously, then taking into consideration the town finances and what we can do. So it's actually a little bit of a juggling act to do the best we can, but also not ask for the world. And strategically, using our, our grants too. I think that's where, you know, it's great. There's a new grant system that actually is forcing us to be much better at our budgeting. And that's took a lot of work this year. But it's actually making us not just put some, something together in a budget to get it done because they're going to hold us to it. So we had to be very thoughtful. And so there's some additional like textbook, textbooks that can be used that we can put on some of the. on some of the grants. And so when we start spending those, we'll share with you, um, where we, you know, how we're spending that money, so you better understand. I've given you a little bit of a glimpse because on the consent agenda tonight is actually all the fiscal year 24 grants have just been approved. That gives you an idea of what they're used for and if we specifically uh target them for something, I've included that in as the background. And I, and I'll have to say too, we're so grateful for the CSA because the um the funding that they do to sort of add the extras to the school is so um well appreciated. And then Pine Hill sort of has the Solven Fund. Um, it's unique to all, to any of the other schools where there's money there too that's at the discretion of the administration to use to benefit students. And they, you know, have made some significant donations in the last couple of years, mainly your outdoor classroom. It's been heavily funded by by the Solven Fund and the CSA. So it's, it's sort of the partnership that we have um to sort of do some of those things that we might not have a capacity to add into our general fund, but add so much to the school. Um, and that's coming from, from the support of those who um, you know, contribute both to the CSA and then just sort of the the genesis of the Solven Fund and what its goal is. And those are kind of the thank yous that we usually put when we do your formal budget presentation. We highlight how important those are to the operation, how they do, um, you know, make it a better experience for the students.
Couple of things, just having looked at this number of years in a row. Um, the first couple lines on the budget are all sort of district costs that are divided between Dover, Sherburne and the region. Um, another point was the HR manager that was hired. That doesn't show up in here, is that right? Because Sherburne isn't benef- technically benefiting from that individual. I know that's come up in terms of that role and what, but.
Yeah, it's actually only in the region's budget because even though it's shared partially by the town of Dover, it sits of the town of Dover's budget, not in the school budget. Because it's there for the town, not specifically the school. But keep in mind, the region is a town and so we we have that because we don't have any others else, so that's us. So it sits in the region's budget and that's the only place you see that position. You don't see it in either one of the elementaries.
So like, we've got like a relatively long break between now and our next meeting. The next meeting, you'll have sort of a revised version of this, so we've got some time to let this marinate and think through and see if there's anything that, you know, sticks out. Um, but coming back in January with like, that's really like, things are getting real close to.
Right, right. And then the monthly report is always good, so those are your actuals. So that's what I, one of the last pieces I I do um when I'm finalizing is I take my most recent actual and say, okay, where are we now and am I making sure that there's something that we haven't accounted for? So you can sort of do a little looks there, but you can also then see where we have the changes in payroll. You're going to see how that's going to reflect in the budget because um one, either we staff changed or in a case in point with the custodians, you'll see that we're probably over this year because their raises were a little bit more than what we had allocated. Uh, one other thing I I that's minor, but um you'll see as an increase in there in the admin assist at the building level is increasing the um, one of the front office people to be their seven and a half hour a days, increasing it to eight how, eight hours a day, just because it's been a little more chaotic at the end of school and it's nice to have those two people there. So that's built into here to give the extra two and a half hours a week. Um, so that was one, it's not huge dollars, but that was actually um an request from the building to have better coverage.
Chaos at the end of school.
Yeah.
Shocking.
Anything else? Huge thank you to not just you, but to the entire team.
So um I will, I will need, oh, and actually, let me just go to capital real fast. So you'll see there's nothing being requested for capital right now for fiscal year 25, but we put a placeholder for improvements to address the building temperature. And I mentioned in there that we're doing the cooling study and hopefully we'll have something that we will still be able to jump on the the capital um committees uh calendar if we can. And then really looking out, the only big item that we have even for the next four years is really just determining that building and the roof covering. So there's nothing, I I updated that. We had a roof assessment done for all the schools in 21. We made a few little repairs. We have absolutely no concerns with that. And the onsite insight plan puts that at like 20 years, but we know, we all know it can get longer than 20 years if you have a good base of a roof. So that um we're still holding it there as a placeholder in 26, but that can all also be pushed out probably another couple of years. And it could be depending on what we decide to do that we just never replace that, that roof, because it it's not an investment. If you're looking at a 20-year investment, it might not be the right thing to do. So other than that, our capital is looking pretty um empty. Um, so we'll see what comes forward um from the cooling study. But uh before you leave tonight, I do need you to approve separately the operating budget and then the capital budget, so we can submit it to each of the two respective.
Can I get a motion to approve individually or?
Oh, you can do them both.
Uh, the operating and capital budgets um as Dawn has presented to share first drafts with the town.
Kristi Marsh, so moved.
Second?
Amanda Brown, second.
Thanks, Amanda. All those in favor? Kristen, I'm not sure if you can hear us.
Yes, I can hear you. Kristen Aberli, yes.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
I forgot to check with you, Kristen. Do you have any questions on, um, I'm assuming you're?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And any questions that you guys have, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get in touch.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Uh, consent items, these each need to be approved. Um, so first, and these are all in the package that was sent um earlier. Uh, so the first is the approval of the September 19th meeting minutes. So I request a motion to approve those.
Kristi Marsh, so moved.
You can do it as a package if you'd like.
Do we do it all together?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So let's take a step back then. So there's the minutes. I, if you do have any edits, I didn't notice anything. Um, Clarin, donations, do you want to give a quick summary?
Sure, as Dawn mentioned, you know, Pine Hill wouldn't be Pine Hill without the CSA and um they have generously donated, including yourselves, $50,000 to um support additions to the playground, including the climbing structure that you have in your packet, as well as um some other items that need repair. Um, so thank you to the CSA for that huge donation that in addition to some of our own funds will kind of bring Pine Hill Playground back up to snuff, um, with additional bells and whistles, so.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, so we've agreed to fund about $15,000 worth of repairs. We're, we're sharing with the CSA the slide that's has been non-existent. Um, we're doing an open slide and also repairing another piece of equipment where cost sharing that. So it's about 15,000 that you'll see coming out of the building funds and that's part of their, the gift from CSA to sort of make that all happen. And then the last is just the grants. So this, we started this last year, just getting school committee approval of the grants that we um have been, that we have been awarded for fiscal year 24, just to um sort of round that out. I gave you the amount and sort of the like, um, if we receive annually, if we don't receive annually. One thing I should point out, when you look at your budget book for 25, you'll see in the title, one grant was much higher in 23. That one does um fluctuate based on our free and reduced lunch increase. Uh, so when you go over the 5% threshold is where you get the higher amount, which is where we're at the 40,000 level. Um, we were under that this 24, so it's really our October census date from last year. So it's 18,000. Um, we do fund a position with this grant, however, we have carryover money from the 40,000, so it will be okay, but we'll have to keep an eye on that for fiscal year 26. Um, speaking with our director of food services, she feels that we're going to probably back in the 5% uh for Sherburne in in 26. So in 25, I mean, 25. My ears are getting lost, in 25.
Questions on that? Makes sense? All right. Motion to approve the group of consent items as presented.
You know, I'm so sorry. Meg, for the last, for the minutes from last meeting, um, Meg attended and provided the update. Ariana was unable to attend and it's got both of them.
Okay, great. Take that change, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so moved, Kristi Marsh.
Any second?
Second, Amanda Brown.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi? Kristen?
Kristen Aberli, yes.
Great, unanimous. All right, um informational items, so including the package of the newsletters for November and October, I think you guys have probably received those through other mechanisms as well. Uh, the Dover School Committee minutes from June, um, feels like an alternative, and then the regional meeting in September. Um, just for kind of awareness and what's going on there. Our next meeting is the fifth, I thought we had one in January, but that might be the joint.
Joint.
That's joint. So any items, I know that I've talked to some of you guys about like committee updates or whatnot and, you know, if there's nothing to talk, we don't, we obviously need to force it, but I'll reach out when we come closer just to make sure that if there are any updates, we'll, we'll cover those at the meeting. If there's anything else that comes up through talking with any of the stakeholders in town, uh, we can evaluate getting that on the agenda as well. Anything else? So we adjourn, uh, or motion to adjourn?
So moved, Kristi Marsh.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.